...
Trustee Cap?
Here.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Here.
Trustee Clayber?
Here.
For the former president, could we stand up to the floor? Please, Trustee Garcia.
State of the House. When you report for which is stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a living and justice.
Okay, any approval of directions of the minutes of the board meeting on December twenty eighth, two thousand seventeen?
Yes. In the first report, she made it a mention to, for the record, that she didn't appreciate me insinuating that the coronation's call was rude. And then my comment, for the record, was that I did not insinuate, that's what the gentleman said.
I mean, was that in the minutes or about?
Well, she said it was for the record. So it should be in the minutes.
And is that what you said, for the record?
I'll have to read your coroner's card.
I'm gonna give it to you. Okay, now, though. Change the suggestion. I would ask for motion to approve the minutes for the regular board meeting that was held on December twenty eighth, two thousand seventeen.
Should make it subject to the change.
And subject to the review. Will you make a motion? Are you making that motion?
I'll make a motion to make it subject to the change.
Could you turn up the microphones, please, so we could hear back here?
A second. A second by Trustee Clayber, for the public to take a roll.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Clayber?
Yes.
The motion passed, thank you. For the sake of this meeting, we have some guests in the house this evening. We have a plan to be relating the vet to the board and to the public. And so I'm gonna ask for motion to change the order of business for this meeting. You know, so the, for this plan can be prevented and the, and entrepreneurs don't have to stay for the whole meeting. So I'm gonna ask for motion to change the regular order of business and to submit ordinance and resolution report in this order in place. And the regular part to the public will go right before the term, for this meeting. So we have a motion to approve that.
Make a motion to change order of meeting to have our ordinance, resolution and planning first.
Okay, that's motion approved by Trustee Garcia to move the ordinance and resolution up on the agenda and put the public's speed right before the agenda. Do you have a second? Second by Trustee Greer, for the public to take a roll, please.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Clayber?
Yes.
The motion passed. Attorney, would you like to make the introduction and say what you want to say?
Great. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
Mr. Dodson, you are in the head of the floor here. This concerns the ordinance concerning the request to have the village support the application of this gentleman's client, which is, I think if I pronounce it correctly, Green Grease Environmental.
Yes, indeed, Mr. Ford.
Uh, to apply for a Class A classification for formerly, or has been, a abandoned warehouse here on Alice Avenue. His client is purchasing it and is attempting to secure this classification so he can get some favorable treatment with the assessor's office. He's gonna reoccupy a vacant property, a vacant building and improve the property. And if you can describe what your client does and what your plans are for the area, so the board and trustees and the mayor and myself, I have a little, a week, I kinda know what you're doing, but so everyone else can know what's going on and as well as the public and then we can move on with your request and the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Ford, mayor and trustees. I represent, by the way, my name is Adam Dodson, I'm with Sandrick Law Firm, we are in South Holland. We represent many clients that are looking for opportunities in the south suburbs. One being, this evening, is Mr. Anthony Demma, who has purchased the property at one forty-five fifteen South Alice. This property's been owned by Providence Bank for the last three years and has been vacant for about that amount of time. Unfortunately, during that timeframe, no one's been in there to do ma- any improvements and as the time goes by, the building continued to deteriorate. Fortunately for Mr. Demma, his particular business is actually in Chicago Ridge right now and he's working through the transaction to move his business to the Village of Burnham. What he does in, in, in the background is that he actually picks up the used cooking oil from restaurants and other food service facilities and he does it for free. There's many companies out there that do it from a profit standpoint, meaning that they charge the, the food service provider to pick up the grease and then at the same time, they go out and sell it. What Mr. Demma does is, what he's been able to do is to pick it up for free and still have a profit margin in there that makes his business viable. The reason for this request this evening is that this particular building does need some improvements, it needs some fencing, it needs some landscaping and also an office needs to be provided. One of the things that he's going to be doing as he comes here, he's going to be looking to hire three sales representatives to actually grow his business here in the south suburbs. And something to kind of be cognizant of, this particular business is that, hey, when you're a small food service operator, you've got lots of choices to make and what bills to pay if you're, you know, trying to be profitable and, and at a loss. Sometimes that decision is, is to not pay your grease pickup and guess what? Your grease either stays there or it gets dropped in the sewer. And the last thing what we need is having grease being dropped in the sewer and that creates other problems for your community as well as the reclamation district. So, Mr. Demma would like to come here and grow his business and as you guys know, that, that particular area is closed down right now, but hoping here over the next couple of months, that he'll be starting to make those moves to improve the property because I believe what he's looking for is to come here this fall and occupy the building once his lease is up in Chicago Ridge. If anything else, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I do believe, Mr. Demma, what he's doing here is taking a vacant piece of property, occupying it and actually providing a vi- a viable business here in the Village of Burnham. And like I said, he's a, he's an environmental type of company. Where he sends his oil, used oil, is actually biofuel. So the group that he sells it to actually reuse the oil and create fuel for other uses here in the future. Be happy to answer any questions.
And we would like to certainly thank you, myself and the attorney and the bill commissioner did come up to visit the, the plant in a great view during the summer and again, we invited it, business to Burnham and we are trying to improve and increase our tax base and bring some job and some employment to the Village of Burnham. It may not happen right away, but at least there's something that's on the agenda and that is part of our job, me being the mayor and the board of trustees and supporting us and supporting the village, you know, to bring in some additional tax revenue for the town as well as to put the property back on the tax roll, which would lack to do the same thing. So again, you know, this is not the first business, this is not the second business that we have been successful in and we certainly will continue to do that throughout the village as best we can. And we do appreciate your interest and your desire to come to the Village of Burnham. Thank you. Trustee, you got a question?
Trustee, when is the projected opening date?
I believe this fall, his lease is up this fall, but he wants to make sure that he has everything in place at the location, including the improvements that he did make and he's providing office space in there for his sales representative as well as putting a security fencing around the location and then also putting out landscaping here this summer.
Okay, thank you very much.
So is this a Class A, um, A L or eight?
Eight, eight.
Class eight? And what does that entail for its reduction of the taxes, property taxes?
Yeah, it's a period, like a period of ten years right now, they have to come back and to, you know, see if they can prove again it's better back to the county, right?
Right.
Okay, so ten years? And he's currently doing business as Green Grease Environmental in Chicago Heights?
Chicago Ridge.
Chicago Ridge? And that's what he's currently doing business as?
Yes.
That company? Do you know of any complaints?
Uh, we are not aware of it.
Okay. Do you know how long the grease will be stored and how it will be stored?
They're, they have trucks that do the pumping, they stay inside the tanks. So the only time there will be any exchanges is when they move into the bigger tanks that be set up.
Okay, and it'd be on the property, not on the street?
Yes.
Behind the fence?
Yes.
And there will be no environmental exposure at all?
No.
We'll make sure of that.
And I'm sure that they have to meet EPA standards.
Yes, they do and again, this is no different than a, a transfer of any, any fuel or anything like that, that there are rules and regulations to it, spillage, those types of things that need to be maintained, that's what the warehouse is actually for. So when the activity occurs, and I would tell you, I, I've been in the restaurant business for twenty years, my family has, and generally where this would probably, you would see the most sensitivity, it's probably a hot summer day, if the winds were blowing, right? I know that's by the rail, that during the transfer, there might be some type of, of odor, but it's very rare on that occasion, meaning that most of the fire, it, where the transfer occurs, from hose to hose.
And this, this property is purchased?
Yes. Through the bank, yes. The bank sale had to occur before the end of the year.
I heard you say that there were three salesmen that will be employed by companies, incorrect?
Those additional.
Additional.
Yes.
Job opportunities for where they're for the village of, where there be job.
They're opening it up to, for those opportunities and the reason, again, where they're at now, they're, they're tight for space, so it's hard to grow their business, here is a perfect location for them to handle three salesmen and hopefully they, they do come from the area here.
Okay, thank you, sir. Got another question?
All right, thank you very much.
Trustee Garcia, would you like to motion that we, you know, authorize approval of Class A?
Make a motion of passing the resolution twenty eighteen R zero zero one. And this motion approving and authorizing the Class A classification for one forty-five fifteen South Alice Avenue. And this motion according is for Class A classification for one forty-five fifteen South Alice Avenue, Burnham, Illinois.
That's a motion approved by Trustee Garcia, believing the second to approve this, and the resolution to authorize Class A incentive for one forty-five fifteen Alice Green Village.
I'll second.
Second by Trustee Cap, for the public to take a roll.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Clayber?
Yes.
Yeah, motion passed and thank you very much and welcome to the Village of Burnham.
Thank you very much.
I'm gonna go back to, we, we can make a motion to that. I'll make a motion after we go back to the regular order of business, which will be the open session. I'm sorry, excuse me, ladies. No, but I'm sorry, it's, uh, it's not, what is going on with the, with the mayor's report? Okay, uh, under the mayor's report, I would like to say we're always welcome to contribute input and even sometimes, I mean, if you disagree, if you disagree with us, then that's fine. But I would also like to say that we need to try to work together and, and there are some issues of investment purposes and, um, there's some other issues that some people need to be addressing and it might be somebody that's wrong. And I would, I would kinda ask that, that, that people are not led by blind people, you know, lead them through, you know, put the destruction, a financial destruction, or whatever the case may be. And, you know, you got a postering, you got the politics and, you know, um, you know, Burnham is advancing and Burnham appears making progress and people are investing money into this town in more ways than one. So again, I ask that we could work a little bit more collectively together. If we disagree, that is fine. We don't mind you disagreeing, that's okay, and that's part of the democratic process. But to continue to come to the meeting and obstructing the meeting and complaining about every single thing, there's some thing that, that nothing really can be done about, you know? And we could always, I mean, belittle one another, you know, and talk about this and talk about that. And it's one thing to have a legitimate complaint, it's another thing to come to every meeting, you know, trying to obstruct the meeting. You got people, you know, have been at the same effort for thirty years, thirty years doing the same thing and coming to meetings and complaining about that. You got people, you know, we got people who have run for election and they lose every election, every election they lose, they like, and they still coming back with the same thing. We need to stop this nonsense and let's work together, okay? So every election that I ran in, I won, and there are some people probably jealous by that and every election they run and they lose. But that tells you something, that the people have spoken and what the people speak should be acknowledged and thank you.
Mayor? May I add something to the report?
Um, I don't know if it's anything specifically that you're speaking about, but, um, as far as elections and so forth, um, I don't, I don't know what that, what that has concerning anything.
Yes, sir.
The, the, the meeting has been very much in order so far. I don't know if you're talking about the old business and the old business, the people that were speaking were people that I've never even met before, that never ran, that had valid concerns and they wanted their concerns met. For instance, we just gave this business a tax cut, but we can't give our own citizens a ta- a break on a very?
And if I made a statement, I've been in one of seventeen years and if I made a statement like that, I mean, it is a statement of, I can assure you of that, okay? And I can assure you another thing, I can assure you that I have more information than that concern the Village of Burnham than anybody in this village period, okay? All the information comes from me.
And it should be distributed.
Then you should be sharing it with your residents.
Depends on what it is.
What do you mean, depends on what it is? Violation of Open Meetings Act, sir.
No, it depends on what it is.
Yes, Open Meeting Act, sorry.
I mean, it depends on what it is and how that disseminated, you know, at a certain time and it will be revealed. I mean, but I have to review it first, you know, if I tell you what I do, you might as well be sitting here, right?
Make it a little louder so we can hear you, mayor. Please pay, we've paid for the speakers, the system, the P A system, whatever you'd like to refer to it as. Could you please put it up a notch so people can hear back here, please?
Okay, no problem, that's all I have to say.
And can I just say, for the record, when any new company goes anywhere in the area, not just in Burnham, they always get a tax break, they always apply for a tax break, that's the only way you're ever gonna get businesses to go in to your area. But keep in mind too, that there, right now, no one is paying taxes on their property by a business coming in and now you're gonna get some money coming in on taxes.
Yeah, ten years from now.
So anywhere, so you know, just keep that.
Ten years tax free, really?
For the, for the record.
Give me ten years tax free.
They, they, they have other things that other businesses have applied for a tax incentive. That has applied for tax incentives and it's not always granted, I've seen that also out of board. Because if, if that was the case, then it would just be made at a lower rate instead of it being understood that there's gonna be a tax break. That's why it's an incentive.
That's a common law too, it's not something we gave and it's something that county says.
Right, it's, it's an incentive. So if a company gets that, you know, applies for that and that's the incentive for them to come into the area. But what I'm saying is this happens everywhere, not just in Burnham.
Thank you. If anyone in here that, I mean, that was a, a plug of it for the statement that I made, I'm not gonna contact you and compliment it. Would you please compliment it? Um. At this time, we will hear a report from the public.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Public, um, Public Education, Health, Safety and Welfare, Trustee Greer?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Burnham Fire and Medical Report. This is for the month of December twenty seventh, twenty, for the fat home, there were a total of twenty-two, twelve hundred days and ten at night. Amnest calls, thirty-four, pretty busy, there were, uh, there were, for the day, there were twenty-four and night, there were ten. Heads up, uh, there, there were over two hundred laws that became effective as of January the first, twenty eighteen, for the state of Illinois. And throughout our board meetings, I will be bringing these, some of these forward, just for your information and knowledge. Senate Bill fifty-five is called Barack Day. As of August the fourth of each year, Barack Day will be celebrated throughout the state of Illinois. Senate Bill seven sixty-four, it requires schools to post content information for the Department of Children and Family Service to report any child abuse or neglect. Senate Bill seventeen twenty-two, it's, it's created, it's created tougher sentencing guidelines for repeated gun offenders while working to keep non-violent offenders out of prison. And Senate Bill fourteen thirteen, it eliminates the bees for a copy of diverse certificate when a person is released from the Department of Corrections. Reminder, if you need a window sign, please ask the ladies at the reception desk if you have them available for you. If you know of any person that's disabled, and I mentioned this before and will continue to do it because it's very important, if you know of any person that's disabled or using oxygen in their dwellings, please fill out a form for the guard department. It's called a Burnham Fire Department Residential Medical Information Sheet. And by signing this form, you're knowledge that you are receiving the information of your free will and that it will be given to the emergency responders as needed, as a needed base only. If you know of anyone or any family that is in need and a lot of times people are going through crisis, uh, people that have lost their jobs, any twin jobs, if you know of any family that is in need, would you please, um, let the Department of Health, Education, Welfare and Public Safety know? And that consists of Trustee Clayber, Trustee Richardson and myself. And I don't know if we can have the answers, but we will do our very best to help where we can with the crisis are in need. So if you know of anyone that is in need, please contact us. And the last thing I would like to say, these are like words of wisdom, Happy New Year to each and every one of you. Do what you do, do what you love to do and give it your very best, whether it's business or baseball, going to a new theater or any field. If you don't love what you're doing and you can't give it your very best, get out of it. Life is too short. Happy New Year to you.
Does that have a question for Trustee Greer?
Yes.
How, uh, how are they supposed to, what's the information for them to contact you and, or Trustee Travis or Trustee Cap?
They can, uh, they can call the village and leave a message, leave a message there and we, and either contact number and we would be, we would be happy to get back with you.
Okay, um, hopefully our, what addresses will be on the website soon?
The reason why the, um, your individual emails are not on there is because of, um, phishing? So there has to be like a contact box, so we're working with that.
I'm glad you brought that up, Trustee. You know, somebody sent an email to the, to the village clerk the other day and it looked like that I sent it, but I did not. I did not send him an email. They said I considered it, but I was looking for her, I wanted to know what she here. And I did not send that email, so that probably didn't even be the form of it. Thank you. Trustee, uh, your report, Public Works and Village Trustee.
Uh, good evening and Happy New Year, everyone.
Good evening.
Um, Public Works Department was out this past week with the snowplow, the plant salt and, um, to, hopefully, uh, everyone was satisfied with the progress of the streets and, um, hopefully they put enough salt down. Um, also, they were taking down signs that solicit businesses for, uh, any kind of advertisement and, um, it's against village ordinance to do so, so if anyone sees anyone's putting signs up or anything like that by advertisement or, uh, soliciting business, you call Village Hall or if anyone needs my, uh, personal cellphone number, I don't have a problem with, um, passing that out also, that's all I have.
Thank you. Your report and that information, ordinance resolution has already been done. Finance, Trustee Cap?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
First question is, am I the only one that doesn't have phone service or how many people on my side of town have their phones on? Cause my house phone has been out since last week, right? Something to do with?
Not too many people have a house phone anymore.
Something to do with the water main break, I think, on Burnham Avenue by the central office. They said it wouldn't be fixed until at least tomorrow night or something.
Really?
Okay, I thought I was, I thought I was like everybody, why didn't it pick up just me? So, discussion of consid- consideration of and taking action on authorizing the payment of this month's bills when funds become available? Any questions?
Yes, what are this month's bills?
There's a big long list, I don't have a list. We would have to have a separate meeting for that. We wanted to provide the entire list of bills. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the payment of last month's bills as funds become available?
That's a motion approved by Trustee Cap to pay the bills as funds become available, that would be passed, passed month. A second? A second by Trustee Clayber, for the public to take a roll.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner? Until we get more transparency with this, no. Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Clayber?
Yes.
The motion passed. I'd like to say one thing more.
My gosh.
The bills have to be paid, you know, whether they're transparent or not, and once we get to service and running the service, then we still have to pay the bill, we are legally obligated to do that and we will.
I, I understand that, sir.
Legally, there has to be a, we have to make, have the statement at least once a month.
Well, if we would have been keeping more adaptive what was going on with our water bills, how much we're, like, what we're paying, we wouldn't be in this situation that we're in now.
Exactly. Amen.
So just, just to say that, we'll pay the bills as money becomes available, it's not, it's not good, it's not appropriate, it's not something that at all.
Well, you have, remember, we bill quarterly, so we'd be, we'd be already two quarters behind every time anyway, so.
I mean, with, with anything.
Yeah, so we're, we're not gonna be extra.
We have no idea what we're collecting with anything. This board has no knowledge of anything.
Yes, we do.
And you've demonstrated that time after time after time.
We do have statements, but we don't have statements, uh, up to date, it's like month to month.
All you need is a treasurer's report, a ledger, that's all you need.
We hired a full-time treasurer.
Who is it?
It's not time for the public to see.
Bone rust.
Okay.
Good evening. It's a good time to whenever I share home with the freezing temperatures, you should, um, insulate your pipes. The pipes that are exposed outside, you should insulate them with electrical heat tape and then foam. This will help you save money later from possible pipes bursting. And if a chance your pipe should freeze, ways you can thaw them are to run, you know, turn your faucet on to see if water comes out. If water comes out, if the trickle only comes out, then it's a good chance you may have, your pipes may be frozen. You can thaw them by using an electric heating pan wrapped around the pipe or your electric hair dryer or wrapped towel soaked in hot water. Also, you can use a portable. Also, you can use a portable space heater, but you should make sure you keep it away from flammable material. Do not use a blowtorch, kerosene, or propane heater. Apply heat until full water pressure is restored. If you cannot thaw your pipes yourself, still, uh, call a plumber to assist you.
Thank you, Trustee Richardson. I think it's also recommended that we would be further away from the water source. Be further away from the water source. And thank you for that report. Uh, passing regulation, uh, Trustee Vanner.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Um, there's a flyer here for our Thornton Township, um, they're having a open house with, uh, free admission. It's a program that, uh, will have a performance from the middle school jazz band. It's on January fifteenth. From, uh, nine in the morning, program begins at ten. Here's a flyer here, you can make yourself a copy. Also, on January thirteenth, the Sandwich Center will be hosting a free fit- fitness and, uh, fun activity. It's January thirteenth, from eleven AM to two PM. You can contact the Sandwich Community Center for further information, or their website, mycnpd.com. Also, they're having, um, on January twentieth through February tenth, on Saturdays, from ten AM to eleven AM, the Sandwich Center will be, uh, hosting a Parenting with a Purpose. And, uh, that's to help with, uh, enhancing knowledge of daily living by providing and sharing knowledge of, uh, to deal with vital issues such as, uh, budgeting and bill payment. And once again, you can visit mycnpd.com for further information. Or you can call the Sandwich Center, seven zero eight, eight six eight, two five three zero. Was that three zero? Yes, here. And that's it, my report.
Yeah, thank you, Trustee Vanner. Demand a presentation of petition. Demand a communication, a memorial of their offices. Demand an unfinished business?
Yes, sir. Did we have an open house that, um, was mentioned possibly on January fourth, for a town hall meeting?
No, I think I sent you a text and said, people don't have it, we shall have it planned.
Okay, are we still gonna do that?
Yeah, still gonna do that.
Okay, do you know what side of town will, uh, be open for a town hall first?
Well, we'll have four of them, at least.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, we haven't quite decided. We gotta try to, we gotta try to accommodate and have it as far as, uh, that can accommodate as many people. So it's gonna have to be divided up a little bit, roundabout, and, uh, so, it might be this side, it might be Trustee Claybrook's side.
Wouldn't the chimney?
But they're about to do it for, I don't know.
And when are they gonna start coming around, three years?
They start most coming at the beginning of the year at night.
Do you know what about that is?
One.
With the, uh, on the old side of Burnham?
No, new side of Burnham.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, do you, what identity each has, who, who's doing it?
The fire department. It's happening now.
The fire department?
Mm-hmm.
And how are they identifying themselves?
Well, they identify, they have only, um, the gear and stuff, so they have ideas and stuff, yeah. So everybody knows who they are.
No, they don't.
No, we don't.
No, we don't.
They haven't got no, to use, so how would you know?
Copy. This company, you don't, I don't, you know, that's a simple question.
Anything on the new business?
Oh, yeah, I have one thing on the new business, uh, one thing on the new business, ComEd was out, uh, cutting trees away from wires and everything on, uh, around Marquette Menestee and Saginaw. And I don't know if they got to any other parts of the village, but, uh, they went throughout the alleys, uh, down the streets and everything, and cut away branches from wires, so there won't be any hazard, or no accidents, or anything like that.
Wayne, do you have anything to add to that?
No, except, um, ComEd, they, they, they're gonna be out for about another month or so to finish that day. Getting the branches that normally we have, they're, uh, when the lights go out, when they hit, when we have a storm come through, they hit the wire. They get in those areas where they, uh, have a lot of that.
Well, thank you very much. Kind of asked for a motion to open the meeting to the public, go back to that, um, the order business that we changed, and then we added this time. In other words, go back to regular order business and open the meeting up to the public. The opening session.
A motion to open the meeting to the public?
There's a motion to go back, Trustee Vanner, will you second?
Second.
And a second by Trustee Greer, will the clerk take it up?
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Vanner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Thank you, Pat, meeting will now open to the public. All right, will you turn the hands up instead?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Stanley Fegorik, I'm the lawyer for the village. And occasionally, I get myself involved with various, uh, uh, goodwill ventures. And I'm not asking for any donations of money, but, uh, some of my friends who are in the medical profession volunteer their services in third world countries to provide medical care. This year, in Jan- in February, they are headed to Ghana, uh, a country in, uh, the continent of Africa. And what they do is they, a team of them, provide medical services to various villages. And this year, uh, they're looking for some donations of used one-way luggage. In other words, if you have a bag, a suitcase, even a very large, uh, looking for larger, uh, baggage, uh, that they can take and use, and take it just one way and leave it there. What they're trying to do, or what they are doing, they would fill this with medical supplies, uh, medicine and equipment that they need when they go to different villages. But it's, there are twelve of them, there's a team of twelve going. They get to take two carry-on bags and two bags that they check to weigh each fifty pounds. So they're kind of short on some bags. And I've asked the mayor, and I talked to the village clerk, if I could make this announcement before the group, uh, so that we can get some extra bags, so they can put more medicine in it. They're getting medicine donated to them from various pharmaceutical companies, et cetera. But they need a way of packaging it and taking it with them. So, they do this voluntarily, they do it at their own cost. It's not an official charitable organization, so if you donate a bag, you're not gonna get a, a letter that you donated something. But, uh, it would be very appreciated if you could, if anybody has any bag that they wanna maybe discard now, early spring cleaning. Uh, the village clerk is graciously, uh, took on the idea that she would accept any of these bags between now and the next village board meeting. I have to get this to, to the doctors that I know, uh, well into, well, by the end of January, so they can pack this stuff and get ready to go. But I appreciate the mayor and the, and the board of trustees giving me this opportunity to make this request. It, uh, you know, we take things for granted. Things that we have here in medical care, these countries, particularly to children, don't have what we have. And, uh, by the way, that reminded me, the second thing they're looking for, any kind of stickers, stamps or something like that. They give the child a card, and when they go to different stations, they put a little sticker on his card saying, you know, the child had gotten a vaccination, or had his hearing, hearing, uh, his hearing checked, or his eyes examined. So if you have any extra stickers, we'd appreciate those too. Thank you again for giving me this opportunity.
Do you...
Oh, and they said the, the country was Ghana?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Can they be, uh, like soft?
I'm sorry, yeah.
Soft cases?
Be better, because they can, they can, duffel bags, big duffel bags would be ideal. Uh, so, uh, you know, but it's a one-way trip for the bag. So, uh, there's gonna be about forty-eight or fifty bags or so, unless they get a couple more volunteers to go with them. Right now, the contingency is twelve, uh, doctors.
What a, what a magnificent...
That is, thank you, very good.
I do, may I introduce myself? Okay. Um, hello, everyone. Hi, I'm John. Uh, my name is, uh... And I just want to introduce myself, my name is, uh, Judge Latrice Chappane. I'm in the first judicial sub-circuit, which includes all of Burnham. I was appointed December thirtieth, two thousand sixteen. Um, so I wanted to come and introduce myself, let you guys know, um, who one of the judges is that, um, is appointed to the area where you sit in, have been, where you reside. I've been an attorney for twenty years, and I've represented indigent individuals who cannot afford to hire private counsel, and I did that in Will County. Right now, I am assigned to the traffic division at the daily center, and I also do misdemeanors and felony preliminary hearings. Um, so I just wanted to say hello, um, put a face to the name, and that's it.
Hello, Mayor. Um, I, uh, recently, uh, my name is Pat Olson. I, uh, recently, uh, put in an FOI for a little more information on the loan. And, um, um, I would also like to suggest, before I get started, that you answer questions as we go along, as opposed to last meeting where, you know, they got left behind, and I think we would eliminate maybe more questions, some of the similar questions, if I can suggest that. But anyway, um, there were, uh, as I understand it, there's another attorney working with Mr. Fegorik, uh, and I'll probably crucify his name, but it sounds like Vincent Kankar, working with you, Mr. Fegorik, to, with the EPA. That's what the report said. So I, I don't know if that's true or not. But the conversation was between him and this Kevin Bryant from the Illinois EPA. And on December twenty-seventh, uh, Mr. Kankar sent an email saying he was working with the village on financing for improvements. He stated, "We are a home rule municipality," and as he remembers, home rule entities do not have to prove that there are sufficient water funds available to pay the debt on an IEPA loan, if they may get a general obligation debt. And he asked that Kevin Bryant if that was correct. Kevin responds and says, "The program does allow for alternative sources of revenue. They would prefer the revenues to come from the, uh, operating system, which would be our water. But they would work with the applicant to try and document, and work with us to provide a financial application." And he said, "In general, looking at our median population and median income, it appears that we would be, uh, eligible for principal forgiveness of part of this loan, as well as a lower interest rate." On January second, uh, Mr. Kankar wrote him back and said, "Thank you for our response. It appears that the village would be entitled to a thirty percent forgiveness loan based on the criteria set forth in the Illinois Administrative Code. We would intend to prepare an ordinance for Burnham, similar to what we did for Bridgeview. However, we would set forth provisions," this is the part that kind of bothered me, "in that ordinance, which would provide for a tax levy to be filed at Cook County, so that there would be actual specified sorts of funds." So, my first question is, are we not only gonna get a water increase, but maybe an ordinance to set forth funds to Cook County? So that's kind of like double taxation. My second question is, when you have a thing like that, doesn't that need to go on a, a voting thing, or like a referendum?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And then, he also made the comment, this Vincent Kankar wrote, "The village of Burnham is not in great financial shape, so it needs to budget to afford any capital expenditures." On January four, uh, third, Kevin wrote back that said Burnham would qualify for the principal forgiveness program, and they process that first, before there are any loan repayments made back. So I believe the figure was like four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, again, do we need to have this huge increase? Is there a way to back it out? Um, and from what I understand, you're still working to get this all in process?
Everything is under review, and, uh, and so when we come up with a final decision, then, then we'll certainly get back to you on that.
Okay. But is everything that I stated correct?
I would say that, I would say we move in the right direction, then we'll get back.
Okay. Thank you.
And then other comment?
Yeah, um, last meeting, where's my trainer, Todd?
Can I have your name for the record?
I'm sorry, I'm John Idu. Last meeting, when I was here, uh, had Denise over there yelling about you had sent up, you had sent a memo to the EPA, as well as received the memo from the EPA, stating that the village would not require a water bill increase, water rate increase. You said, you said that didn't exist, she said, "I got the information, I got the, uh, EPA letterhead." You said, "No, that's not it," and it kind of got shoved under the rug. Well, it's funny how life works. I also shared with you, all you guys, last week, last meeting, that, uh, I went in and asked for a water bill increase, how, how much it was gonna be, and Stephanie, it's like a blessing in disguise, she didn't know it. She suggested that I needed a Freedom of Information request for that. I'd never been involved with that before. So I waited there, I got the thing, ten, fifteen minutes later, I took off, and I'm thinking to myself, wait a minute. You had suggested that the information that she got was incorrect, and kind of let it go with that. Well, me and a good friend of mine, she went and got computer access, she went on the EPA website, and by golly, got basically the same information from the EPA.
So did I.
Joyce did, well, yep, and I'm... So, I looked over some of the, some of the information, and basically, either the, either you are correct about it, and the EPA didn't send it, or the EPA, the information that you sent me is true, and you were just lying last meeting, because I had the information in front of me. Now, basically, it says July you started, you decided, uh, you sent the, the memo July, you know this already, I'm just kind of refreshing your memory. July of twenty sixteen is when you sent the memo, check in the box, "Know" that we do not need a water bill increase as a result of this. Come January, January twenty seventeen, this is six months later, uh, EPA sent you a letter addressed Mr. Polk, stating that you had suggested that you do not need the water bill increase. Okay, fine. Well, April seventeen comes the election, you get re-elected. Well, come forward, the, the November election that you had, the November, uh, vote that you had for this water bill, nobody knows when it was taken, how it was taken, who was, who was present or anything. I'm, I'm just wondering, this thing got passed in November of last year. I'm wondering what changed between November of sixteen, when you said we did need the increase, EPA backing that up? Okay. I got another question, go ahead.
Okay. Um, well, I mean, that was an error, and...
What was an error?
I mean, it was an error that, that the engineer, I mean, put that on the form, and it was an oversight, and...
I just got it three weeks ago.
You know, I mean, we knew that that was gonna be an increase, but we certainly was hoping that it would be administered.
You said no. They agreed with you.
I didn't say no, they checked, no.
You checked, no, and you signed the bottom of the memo.
Yes, I did, but, I mean, but that was...
We got it, thank you.
At that time.
No, 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 they agreed with you, Ja- six months later, January seventeen, they sent...
But it had, it had nothing to do with the election, and if the...
No, 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 I said, the election came and went, and then, perhaps it didn't have anything to do with the election.
In the next meeting, I mean, I'm gonna show everyone, and what we had town hall meeting throughout the village, and we mentioned on the fact that water increase was gonna go up, and I'll have...
You never suggested it was gonna go up three hundred percent.
I haven't put a negative in there.
Okay, my next question is, I also brought up to you last time, I thought it was kind of cute, what you did, not answering the questions after we asked them. I kind of forgot you had, I forgot you didn't answer the second one of mine, concerning the background checks of the employees. I mentioned a Nancy, Nancy Johnson situation. And I also thought it was kind of funny that you guys passed an ordinance last week, uh, concerning cannabis and drug paraphernalia? uh, concerning cannabis and drug paraphernalia, some penalty on it. I thought it was interesting that everybody voted for that, a penalty, except trustee Greer. And I don't know why you voted no, I don't need to know why you voted no, but perhaps that's just another reason why we want to have background check. And can I also suggest that based on, this is only the second meeting I've ever been to. I've been, I'm a lifelong citizen of Burnham for 55 years. And trustee Bonner seems to be the only one that will interject her voice into any subject that we're talking about. Everybody else seems kind of quiet about it. I'm the new guy, I'm telling you what I see. And that's kind, that's why I would suggest, if you don't mind, I would, I would like to strongly recommend that she be in charge of background checks just to make sure because she seems to be the most open and honest person here.
Probably you have to understand that, you know, people have motives for doing the things they do. But you've got certain followers of people and it's energizing people. We've got people that's out putting out venom and putting out stuff that's not...
What does that mean though? What's that concerning? I'm asking about the background checks. I understand your... Does your police and, uh, police and a few other employees in the village have a, uh, drug testing?
I mean, a background check for whom?
Background checks to prevent something from, like Nancy's situation, stealing 650 grand. I'm asking you if you can introduce something to prevent it from happening again.
Uh-huh.
If you look at it, if you see, I have to see if we already have it.
They should know. They should know.
I got to confirm with our chief of police, background checks are usually done with the police department.
If I, if I made sure, it was a village clerk that committed that crime though. It wasn't the police department.
If you have someone that's in the public office and have access to certain resources, if that person wants to commit a crime, you can't stop them.
Who's overseeing those right now? Who's overseeing, who's, who's watching over everybody?
The water work superintendent should be. Yes, sure, an ordinance, yes, that's why you stopped it.
If I may answer the gentleman's question, well, the clerk is an elected position. That's an elected position. Um, there, there are certain things that will prevent a person from, from being on the ballot and having a felony is one of those, um, one of those things that will prevent someone from being on a ballot, but that is an elected position.
Okay, but the elect, go ahead, I'm sorry.
The treasurer is an appointed position, appointed by the mayor. Um, as far as background checks for that position, any, any other person that's working in the office, um, like the mayor said, maybe the attorney or himself can answer that. As far as the police department, um, running checks, it's, it's not permissible for the police department to do, to run background checks on, on employees.
Right.
They have to go through the proper state, uh, facility.
I was basically concerned with people who have their hands on their money, that's all.
And it was mentioned in our audit, uh, this summer, for the past fiscal year, that it is recommended from our, um, uh, audit company that we serviced, that serviced us for to have, uh, individual logins to keep track of who's accessing what. I'm not sure if that was done yet. So everyone in the office has an individual login for any systems to deliver money?
Denise, who was advised we should have an inspector general watching over everybody? Who proved it, didn't want it.
Mr. Attorney, is an ordinance considered a law in this village? Is it supposed to be enforced?
Law, an ordinance is a law.
Speak up, please.
Yeah, can we hear you?
An ordinance is a law.
Why at the last meeting, the mayor said they weren't, they were a guideline.
What time, what time, ready? Thank you, sir.
Three minutes, please.
Oh, sure, glad to, it's you, okay. No one else gets, uh, the...
You had six minutes.
Yeah, exactly, no one else gets, uh, three minutes, that's okay. I'm going to speak loud enough so everyone in the room can hear. Okay? None of this muffled, uh, conversations, whispering, notes passing, whatever, all out front in the open. John, first question to you, please. Joyce Fishoff, Lou's. You're welcome. For the record, yes, sir, all of this is supposed to be for the record. First of all, these minutes were approved today. They do not reflect everything that was brought up at the last meeting and everyone knows that. The meeting December 28th, there was a question that was directed to you, Mayor, about trucks sucking water out of our fire hydrants. And you said you knew about it, it wasn't important. Yes, it is important. Every drop of water in this village is paid for by the residents. You also said there were meters on the fire hydrants, there are not. So you knew how much water was being sucked out. Please, that's my time, sir. We have you saying that. In front of 45 residents, I have signatures of people that were at that meeting. They are all willing to testify to that. Okay, who are the truck, who are the trucking companies? No, these are community residents, not my people, they're our people. They are our people. This is the town of Burnham.
You are misleading people, yes you are.
Wait, no, no, that's okay. Let him talk, let him take part. Wait, this has been witnessed and you confirmed it at the last meeting. Why is that not in the minutes of this meeting? Mr. Cap, how much money do, do these truck companies do purchase our water? According to the mayor, he knows about...
We did have an ordinance that was approved that set that price. It was really high, much higher than we paid for the water.
Okay, who are the companies that are taking the water? Not us, no, no.
Like that wasn't happened yesterday, that was like years ago.
Oh, wait a minute, excuse me. So you're saying this, this has been going...
This arrangement has been set.
I'm hearing me.
Has been going on for years, is what you're saying.
It's an instant ordinance and it set the price and the price was really high and they were willing to pay it.
Okay, but possibly for the next meeting, John, could you bring, A, either the ordinance or maybe both?
The arrangement, there was a contract, yeah, there was.
And a contract between whoever is also using our water?
We're not just giving the water, way it was set.
I didn't say you were, John. I'm asking if you could possibly do that, okay?
The fee was set up, there's B, the fee was ridiculous, the price that they were willing to pay for it.
Right, I understand that. Now, John, you've been a lifelong resident of this town.
Yes.
So you are aware of the agreement between Calumet City and Burnham and the state of Illinois when they repaired State Street, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so you have knowledge about that agreement. At that time, our water was increased for the residents to pay for the funding because we didn't have the money to kick in. And the state wasn't going to pave State Street or put in streetlights unless Burnham kicked in a certain dollar amount. So we cut an agreement with Calumet City to purchase our water for them, from them on the east side of town, okay? New Burnham. And it was for a 10-year period. That 10-year period has gone by and then the rates were supposed to be lowered. To my knowledge, and correct me please, John, if I'm wrong, I'm not singling you out, but you're the longest-term person and you have a good recall. Why were the rates never lowered after the contract period like was presented to the public?
The rate, the rate we get from Hammond though, that's the contract we have for the water is with Hammond.
The contract was with Hammond, but we were purchasing and paying to Calumet City to pay for that infrastructure.
That was a separate bond and that was paid for?
That was paid for, but at the time of the meeting, when this arrangement was decided, it was stipulated that once the road was paid for, our water rates would go down. They never have, John.
No, because it's a Hammond, it was a contract with Hammond and Cal City has a slight surcharge in the rate.
The surcharge with Cal City, once it was eliminated, our water rates were supposed to go down. They have never gone down.
That surcharge hasn't gone down.
I mean, it was over $2.25.
Excuse me, my question.
There is this slight surcharge on the Hammond and the way the contract's set up is even with the surcharge with the Hammond, we feel like the contract's set up, we pay a little bit less.
So next, at the next meeting, can you write yourself a note, please, to bring those?
Do you want to know what the surcharge is?
No, not to surcharge the documents.
Fifteen cents per thousand gallon.
Thank you. But the documents with regard to selling our water, with regard to the hydrants, if you don't mind, please? And any other documents that may or may not be in your consideration relevant to answer trustee Bonner's questions with regard to, A, the transparency, so we know what our village bills are? You know, you have a household, everyone here has bills, everyone has an income. We don't always have the flexibility, especially seniors on a fixed income. You know, I'm not saying the majority of the residents of this community are seniors, but there is a huge population of seniors. Am I correct in assuming that? Okay, why then was there no consideration given for any seniors in this town with regard to the water ordinance that everyone voted on? And also I'm requesting, on behalf of our new trustee here, who has been speaking out answers for us to questions that we have, that we have asked her and on our behalf representing our community, she has brought to this board, okay, for transparency purposes, you can understand it, you work for the VA, you know how the government runs, transparency is very vital, okay? Communication is very important. You could bring a package for the trustee as well as the residents with the documents so we don't have to run to the IPPA, um, DNR and everybody else to obtain these documents, put them together like attorneys do for trial preparation and provide them to the public. Here's your package, here's the letter from the EPA, here's where we stand. And why, John, weren't we eligible for any grant money? Has anyone even considered that?
Yes, we've talked about it.
You cannot get grant money from a pilot that's self-generating revenue. You cannot, you cannot.
No, on behalf of the individuals obtaining the meters.
You also mentioned at one of the meeting that we could have a fund, are you kidding?
No, I'm not kidding, Mayor. I'm not kidding. Yes, I have one other question. Okay, I'm trying to. I think this is relevant to every person that lives in this town. And I think that the reason you're seeing new faces at these meetings and you will be seeing others is because of the fact this affects every household. And there are some seniors, they are not able to get out at night because of their eyesight being poor, so they don't, they have limited driving licenses and also their health may be poor. I am suggesting that possibly, instead of a meeting here and there where bits and pieces of information are disseminated, it's one large meeting. You want to do it over a two-day period to accommodate people's work schedules, that might be very good. The Burnham School, as Ms. Olson suggested, is the ideal and largest facility available for anything like this. When they were talking about putting runways right down my house, we had meetings over there, sir.
That will be taken under consideration.
Thank you.
And are there any other comments on that?
Yeah, I'd like to say something, I'm not going to stand up because I can't. My name is Dolores Hurley. I have a question, I have a neighbor that whenever it snows and the plows come through, we're not Chicago, we're Burnham, they're putting chairs out in front for parking.
Have you called and complained about it?
What good is it do?
Have you called and complained about it?
No, I haven't, but I'm complaining now. Okay, I'm telling you now.
Okay, public work, if you see any chairs out there, please remove them.
Who takes care of that?
Do you have the address, did we have the address?
It's, um, it's right across the street from me. Uh, 14112, it's directly across, you'll see the red chair parked there.
Okay, we'll take it.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? The last one.
First of all, let me comment on your smart comment earlier. We should know the fire department, my name is Carol. We should know the fire department, we've had enough fires by us. That's to answer your smart a- question.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And number two.
Another question?
Number two. Can you please let us know what the sewer rate's going to be? You were supposed to discuss it and vote on it, if I'm not mistaken, the last meeting. And there's nothing in the minutes about it? There's nothing in the minutes about the trucks filling up with water?
We did that, but we approved it the last meeting.
It's not in the minute. What's the rate?
It was a dollar per thousand.
Plus that surcharge.
It's not in the minute, it's not in the minutes.
It should, it should have been.
It's not.
We went back to the same dollar a thousand we had. No, with the $10 surcharge. Three times as much as what used to be.
Any other comments?
Hi, my name's, uh, Joe Larn, um, I was formerly in charge of the water and sewer department and, uh, I am no longer as of approximately nine months ago. And it has nothing to do with incompetence or, uh, some other things that have been floating around here. And because I cuss and because I had a brother with my brother, that's why I was terminated. Um, I do know a lot about this water and sewer department. No matter how much that man tries to say that I'm a disgruntled employee, that does not mean what I say is not true. I like to direct, well, actually, Travis, good idea on the signs, man. Every time I see a sign, I'd always have somebody say, "You know, call in and we'll have it removed." What you might just want to do is tell your public works guys, when you see it, just pick it up, man. They know what signs that they're on public works, or on public easements, they just need to pick it up. Your public works department will wait until phone calls come in before they pick those up. That's why you can't say, "Well, did you call up on the, uh, chairs?" Why does she need to call up? Why not when they pass by, somebody picks them up, they see what's going on. I have a question. John, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I want to ask you, in eye to eye, so, 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 just, just to see. I'm looking at a document that shows the water rate should only be increased 40 cents. Um, it shows this, it shows that we have 530,000, or 500, 530,000 million gallons per day. That's about 193 million gallons a year. Robinson Engineering said to cover our meter project, that the water rate should only go up. Somehow that water rate jumped from $4.60 to $11 per thousand gallons. I want to ask you this. If the $4.60 is covered by, uh, is going to cover the water meters, the $11 a gallon that passed is about $2 million, $2 million dollars a year in revenue regarding any water loss we might have, which will be corrected. If we're going to have $2 million in revenue, that means there's 1.2 million dollars extra. Why is there 1.2 billion dollars extra coming in water revenue? That's not even counting the sewer. The sewer, I have a document that shows from 2016 that our sewer budget was about $38,000 is what came, is what our budget was and we had a revenue of like 135,000. So we had more of a revenue on our sewer than we actually owed. If the sewer is, is adding itself, why didn't we just raise it to like $144,000 when our budget is only 38,000? Are we being gouged? And you could say it's for projects coming up, but shouldn't you decide what the projects are and then raise your rates? I can't understand how this board can make a mistake of $11 an hour, or $11 per thousand for sewer and $11 per thousand for water. That is $4 million a year in revenue. Why did this board vote $4 million a year in revenue, saying my numbers are wrong? $11 plus a thousand and $11 per thousand is $1,980,000 per each one. You take $11 and you multiply it.
Let's forget about the sewer though, because we fixed that.
But why do you need so much on sewer?
That, we fixed that, we went back to the old...
No, we're still, we're still talking, just add a minimum of $10 per household.
The reason was because we're not charging, there's other charges, like when we clean streets and clean drains and some of the things we should be charging.
No, it's not.
But we're not charging those correctly to sewer, that's where we need a little bit more money.
Where's it being charged?
A lot of it goes in the public works and we need to fix it.
So you're throwing the money around, you're mixing it up, you can't tell what's what?
A little bit of that street cleaning and sewer cleaning and drain cleans were charged the wrong. So that's kind of what that, the extra money is for.
But aren't you supposed to, aren't you supposed to fund your, your budget? When you decide how much you're going to charge, isn't it just to fund that account and not to make a bunch of extra revenue? Because it looks to me, this is what it looks to me, it looks like you're charging so much that you think the people are going to forget about it and you're going to be paying for a bike trail, you're going to be paying for summer helpers and you're going to be paying for a community center that are going to have people working there. You're going to have all this extra money that is just going to be thrown around for the next year. At the expense of the people.
It's not going to happen. Some of those numbers you read earlier too on that report from Robinson, they were totally wrong as far as what the average...
Well, how did, how does our engineer, our engineering come that I take a project that's the big... the biggest project in Burnham's history? Because we went from a black, from in the black, when the mayor Polk got in 12 years ago, to in the red, to a half a million dollars in debt. Okay? Now, he let that go for six years. We were losing money, losing money, losing money, losing money, losing money, year after year after year, you didn't speak up, and you didn't speak up. I did speak up.
And can I just say something for the record? The bike trail is being funded by a nonprofit profit called Open Lands. We're not paying for the bike trail.
Right now, you know we have to pay for the bridge?
No.
Once it's completed, we're responsible for bridge maintenance? We're responsible, yes. They just didn't, ask Mayor Polk, ask Mayor Polk.
We're hoping the maintenance will be handled by the park district.
You're hoping?
Hoping.
I mean, we'd have to have a bridge before we could ask the park district to maintain it. I think the park district is gonna take the maintenance of the entire bike trail.
The bridge gonna be done by then.
We have talked to the park district, they're gonna take only the maintenance.
Maintenance is gonna be minimal, once it's built.
John, you didn't, you didn't answer my question. They're not wrong, Robinson is not wrong. Robinson is saying, saying it's gonna take 820,000, Robinson is saying it's gonna take around $800,000 to fund that meter project. They're saying that that'll cost the village about $85,000, $90,000 a year. They're saying to raise our rates 40 cents will cover that. So we will cover the cost of the meters with a 40% increase. So the other difference between 4.60 went up to 11, where's that additional $6 going? Is it to pay for the $530, $530 million that were in the hole? And if it is, it should pay for it in one year. In one year, because that's an extra $1.2 million. So how are we gonna pay?
A lot of people around, so...
You, well, I tell you what, this is all tape, this is all tape.
No, I mean, no, some of them, some of them are.
Hold on a second, this is all tape. I would love for you at the next meeting to come back and tell me where I was wrong, and one thing you haven't done, you have not brought, you sent an accountant deciding what we were gonna pay. You have not brought anybody in here, except for Mike Gilio, or somebody else, to talk about the budget, you've never addressed the budget.
Yeah, give us, we're still kinda working on things, give us a little bit more time.
You said you would be happy to talk to anybody before and after the meeting?
I would.
If I can't get straight answers, which I can't, from the mayor, because he gives you answers, I'd love to speak with you, John.
Pat, when you gave all those statements earlier, it's all things I've read before, it's not, so you didn't have any, they were all accurate figures?
No, the thing that concerned me the most, the thing that concerned me the most is, not only are we talking a huge rate increase, but then, an extra tax that would be on our Cook County tax bill, that's a problem.
Well, that's if you, that's if you change, change the application, that's...
Next meeting? No, when will you get back with us? Next meeting with this stuff?
I mean, it may not be the next meeting, it may have to be the first meeting, especially where we'll probably get back.
All right, last question, this man.
Hi, my name is Renee Henry, I'm a resident of Burnham. This is my first time coming to a meeting, and as I sit here, I'm listening, I did not know about the increase, the big increase that we're gonna have with our water bill. I am a single person living in my home. I want to be able to afford it.
Amen. I'm by myself.
I can't afford a home if the bills are going to increase this.
Amen.
Definitely.
Yes. This is like, I'm just...
Crouching.
I'm sitting here with my mouth open, because I cannot believe that, that a water bill would be, are all of you all residents?
Yes.
And all of you are okay with the...
We're gonna get back with you.
That's why we're here, we're not okay.
It's gonna be at every meeting until next day, when there's an election. So you can make that statement at the beginning, oh, you want to buy your haters out here, but you're gonna be seeing us.
Let me say this, it's always a public meeting, you're welcome to come. But let me say this, before we, during, close out, one of the reasons that we should have, like I said before at the other meeting, I mean, we should have, I mean, raised the rates a little bit higher, I mean, in previous years, we should have. I mean, if we had done it then, we still have some complaints then. Unfortunately, we waited till a little bit later, so we have complaints now.
You waited.
Wasn't we?
No, you never came to a meeting.
I got, I got emails, we're practically begging you to change your meeting, you wouldn't do it if an election was coming up.
That's what I told the people before the election was gonna be, and I'll have that at the next meeting.
Where did the money go?
You were asking about the accountability, I mean, one thing we have now that we never had before, but we didn't have back during the last day, is that every penny, I mean, every nickel, every dime, every quarter, a penny a half, a dollar, five dollars, whatever deal that comes in, we have a record on the daily basis, on the daily basis.
Is that right?
Yes.
That's not the one I hear, and I'm the new guy here.